And there was discussion that Samantha had shared about the public works foreman pay scale change. We did not address that at that time. The committee met on that again. We do have a recommendation for that. And then we also did talk about the recreation director job description, which is the beginning of the second tier of things. We also discussed that. But I will think Sean Christensen is going to present information on that.
Mayor, members of the council, would you like me up at the mic? There or here? Fine.
Better if you're at the mic, then we can hold off the crainer next. Please.
Mayor, members of the council, and on behalf of the Labor Committee and Ms. Beckman, the HR Director, present the following car forms. The first one, as Mr. Mesky has mentioned, is the adjustment of the public works foreman pay scale or pay range. Some of the history here, of course, is we met again on the 26th to discuss the pay range. This has recently come to light. It's been an issue for quite some time, but recently come to light with the approval of the parks, or I'm sorry, the project manager position and where to place that position on the pay scale. The foreman pay should be corrected before we hire the project manager so that the pay, so the project manager doesn't get paid more than the foreman does. Project manager position is posted and receiving applications as we speak. The foreman pay scale should be adjusted before we start that interview process. In an ideal situation, the recommendation would be to approve the foreman pay scale increase effective immediately. And, oops. Proposed range would be 25.16 to 34.64 an hour. And the current foreman placed on the appropriate new step at 48.0480. It says annually. That's not annually.
That's the increase, annual increase.
Increase. I'm sorry. That's correct. Stand for any questions or committee questions?
Audrey, please.
Just a question on looking at the ranges. I understand the minimum, but I'm curious why our maximum range is over $2 more than what's in other cities?
That would be a great question for HR. I know that they just got done doing, let me call this up here. They just got done doing the pay equity, and I assume that they took that into account. And so I don't have the answer for you for that.
I know we looked at some comparables, I can tell you. We don't have those here, but I think we did look at some comparables and some of the pieces that, you know, if you're talking about getting a foreman above a project manager, if you look at the maximum there, that is almost sitting at $67,000. And $67,800 that's on here would put us almost in the same position that we were in before we looked at this, where you'd have that person outpaid by the foreman position. So if you take a look, those maxims are very close to those. And there was supposed to be the structured hierarchy, and I think the numbers came in to justify that number, but.
Can I ask one more?
Yep.
Thank you. Can you explain the organizational structure that is in your department with who reports to who? I guess I was surprised that we're comparing the project manager and the foreman, but maybe that's a...
Sure.
Could you just explain that, please?
Yep. So what happens is, as the director, I've got three, if you will, divisions. That'd be in engineering, wastewater, and public works that report directly to me. And in each of those divisions, there is a superintendent level and a foreman level. Okay, so that's been that way for quite some time. So specifically about the public works, we've got a superintendent and a foreman. Currently, the foreman makes the same dollars, to the penny, that the mechanics do. Okay? So, and I'm getting to your, I'm getting to your question, give you a little background here. So what happens is when the project manager is thrown into that mix, who reports to whom is the question that you're asking and that we came up with the results of. So what, in this particular situation, the superintendent is the top or at the top of the, of the public works and ultimately responsible for everything that happens out there. Foreman would be number two, if you have to put a number on it. And so in the absence of the superintendent, the foreman acts as the superintendent. The project manager in the situation that we're proposing would be officially, effectively a number three. So in the absence of both superintendent and foreman, the project manager would be, would be in charge out there. Now, that doesn't happen very often. The project manager, you know, on a typical day, reports directly to the superintendent. And so it's similar level as the foreman, although the foreman is in charge of being a responsible to the other operators.
Okay. One more?
Yep.
I think that clarifies for me. I was assuming that the project manager was not in the hierarchy of public works, but in the hierarchy of engineering, that. Because I guess I thought that position would be doing projects across the board.
No, the intent of this position all along has been to replace the project management duties that the CER director was doing.
Okay.
Councilmember Schwantus?
Actually, I hadn't planned on saying anything, but I would tell you that I feel good with this. I'm fine with what's been presented and happy to move it forward.
Other questions?
Councilmember Meskey, this is really due to compression, right? With the positions? And so we, we don't want to put ourselves in a position we were three years ago, where we were bumping up against compression, most notably in the police department. But we're trying to prevent that. So we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive after it happens. It's kind of the way that Samantha told me about it. Is that correct?
Absolutely accurate. Other questions for Mr. Christensen regarding the foreman salary? All right. Thank you. Let's talk about the recreation director job description.
Just one more question. When I reviewed the agenda with Ike, he said it wasn't necessary to move these items forward, but Judy's put them on here to move forward. So are you requesting that this be moved forward tonight? Or is there more things that need to be done?
Well, if there, we were anticipating if there were a lot of questions that we needed to go back to the committee to talk about, that was one situation. But if you are comfortable moving this forward, we would certainly accept that, absolutely. Is there any opposition to moving that forward? Then we can certainly add that to the agenda this evening. If there is no opposition.
And I know Sam would, Ms. Beckman would support that as well.
All right. The recreation director job description? Questions or maybe play a little?
Yeah, do you want me to? Yeah, I can run through that, Mr. Mesky, absolutely. Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is, is the first step, if you will. I don't know, maybe you don't consider it the first step, but an initial step to the separation agreement and creating our own rec department. In this case, we would be hiring or proposing this job description as a rec director in order to get that person involved from the, from early onset on creating this and establishing this department. You all know the history. I won't go through that again. Under current circumstance, the community ed, or with the retirement of the community ed and rec director, on September 1st, the city needs to advise, advertise, post an interview to hire this director. So in your packet is the job description that the committee has come up with. We internally vetted this out and then presented it to the committee for your questions and approval.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Sean. When I was reading it, I was concerned about the park development piece. I believe when we had a recreation director before, that that person was in charge of park planning and park development. I do see there's one sentence in here that works with public works department and project manager on park development needs within the community. But I guess when I think about the park board, I'm just curious, who, who will be the overall responsible person for park development?
Park development would ultimate, ultimately, if you're talking the construction and maintenance and upkeep of the projects, would ultimately be me. If you're talking about the programming piece, which we've had to separate off because of the, of the separation with CER, that would be this person.
Okay. I see a third piece that's, that's truly, what are we, what are we going to develop? What's going to be in the parks?
So the construction part of the parks?
Not the construction, the planning before the construction. And that was something that, when we worked on the park plan, that was very critical with what parks, those types of things. What's, what, what park comes next? What equipment needs to be there? Those types of things. I see that different than once a decision is made with what park is going to be next with that. And I think that we are required to have a park board, that someone needs to work directly with that, with that group, as it looks to the needs of the community and the needs of the parks. And so I was surprised to see that this position wasn't truly that person.
Correct. That person that you just described, takes the ultimate facility or parks plan and runs with that as far as what to do in the parks, is the project manager that we just discussed. This is programming. By and large, this director is for all the recreation programming.
Is programming?
Correct.
So we will be missing, we did a park plan, but if we hadn't done one, who would, who would be responsible to develop the next park plan?
Well, I think that would be a combination of potentially this rec director, myself, and the project manager.
Okay.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Thank you. I think in this ever-changing world, that the rec director, I see in, under the rec director definition, a number, keeps abreast of changing developments and trends in the community. I think we have to keep aware of some of the changing activities that are catching our young people's eyes and try to encourage her or him to bring those on, on board in a timely manner. Right now, I think we're playing catch-up on pickleball.
Yep.
And, but I think there's other things that, that we can be looking forward towards coming. So I just hope that there's a visionary piece there. Thank you.
Other questions regarding the recreation director? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Sean. I'm just curious, you know, we had a park and rec director back, I forget how many years before we had community ed and rec. Did anybody refer back to that description, job description?
Absolutely. That's what, that was the basis for where we started. And that was, would have been right before the CER agreement, so it would have been roughly 20 years ago. And yeah, we had that. We polled people that were involved in that, in that system when it was in place, and then we took some of those requirements directly out of there.
Super. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I was pleased to see the sentence in here about seeks out additional resources from various local county, state, private, and prepares grants, because I know that that's, we've gotten some, some good grants, but I know there's other money out there, and I don't know that we've had truly the resources to look for those with that, so.
We did make a couple grammatical changes on here. I see those are not made on the copy that we have here. But I know, for instance, we talked about civic center ice sheets, because we didn't know how many, where there were some, a couple things, so.
You're right. Yeah, you're right.
Make sure that when we, when we get this finalized, if that is where we move towards, that we get that updated.
Yep.
Copy. Other questions regarding the recreation director?
Pardon?
Well, yeah, there is an opposition. Again, this is in the same category. We were anticipating if there were a lot of questions, that we could go back and talk about those things. If there aren't any, is there opposition to moving this forward this evening?
So did we ever talk with the school board or the school superintendent? Since we changed our philosophy on the parks, they don't have to deal with it, because it's pretty hard to have a recreation program when you don't have any gyms. We got one gym. So we have to work with the school. And by going this route, it's going to cost the city roughly, we were told, $250,000 more. It's going to cost the school more, and the services are going to get cut there. So, I mean, community ed was started in the early 60s because you didn't have to have everyone building their own gyms and facilities. That started in Flint, Michigan. And according to our mission statement, we're going against it. We are working with different entities for cost-saving. So I, I got a degree in recreation and community ed, so this is the wrong way to go.
And we discussed that, as you know, at our committee, and we wanted final feedback because we thought if we cross this bridge with this position, this is the, truly the end of that agreement. And so we put out a last olive branch if there was any reconciliation to be done. And I don't know if, if City Administrator Holland, if you can chime in on that, what was the appetite from the school board to be working on rescinding or moving back off of their hiring and re-establishing any of that relationship?
Well, my last conversation with them was that, you know, we're moving forward in our separate ways and that Dr. Holm and I will continue to work together and we will form some agreements here in the fall and work together and cost share where we can and save each other money. And I don't know what the final cost will be, but there will be some increase, obviously, on both of our budgets.
Other questions regarding that? Is that opposition warrant holding this back? Or there's probably, if there's no appetite on the other end to work with it, I don't know what information would change to warrant moving this off, but.
You know, I think we have to remember why we're here. The reason we're here is we couldn't make a decision before. And the school board got tired of us waiting. And so if we're going to keep our recreation facilities operating, we've got to keep moving. And, you know, you and I had a conversation last week, Councilmember Meskey, in trying to put that olive branch out there. I've extended it numerous times. We heard the city administrators extended it. I know you extended it. And, you know, there's not an appetite. They're going a different direction. We didn't do what we should have done a number of months ago, and that's why we're where we are today. And so I think we've got to keep this moving. I mean, it's not fair to the rest of our staff to put the added responsibility of community education on their back as well. You know, last time I talked to Sean, you know, he wasn't looking for more work. He had plenty on his plate, you know? And I think you can say that with the police chief and the fire chief and the planning development director. And so we've got to keep this moving. I mean, you know, Mr. Brizendine was done last Thursday, I believe was his last day. And we've got to keep these functions going. You know, we've got a good head of steam behind us. Let's keep the engine running. You know, none of us want to be where we're at, but we are. And so we have to keep moving. If, if, you know, school board chair would have reached out to myself or someone else when we contacted them, it may have been a different story. But I don't know how we proceed with just three positions and not having a director. You can't put the added workload on, you know, where it is right now. Today, it's on, you know, Mr. Christensen, our public works director. Well, that wasn't a bailiwick he signed up for when he put his name on the line. So we've got to keep this moving. And I agree with Councilmember Fagley 100%, you know. 1999, July of 1999, the council came together and they said, we want to partner. And I believe it was June of 2000, Bruce can probably remember better than I can. June of 2000, we entered into the agreement and said, this is the format we're going to go with. We blew that up three months ago. So now we've got to move, we've got to put it back together, we've got to go. It's time to go.
And so, you know, at the committee level, some of the conversation was, of course, we didn't want to see a diminishing in programming. And of course, the next step would be after the director here is the program manager. And we've held off on that because I thought those would come at the same time. But we're waiting to make sure that we know what programming is going to be coming from the K-12 system, and so we can make sure that we have the adequate programming here as well. So we are aware of all the programming that was done before, and we want to make sure as much as that stays intact as possible. So this is the order that the committee thought we should bring this position. And so if there isn't a strong opposition, is, I would like to move this forward to the, this evening's meeting as well. Looks like the majority, so if we please do that as well. I will also say that we are going to address at the next meeting the status of the park board as well. We do have a park board and we, what we currently have, of course, the joint powers board, but we've had some of them act as a park board. But we're going to talk about how the future of that should look as well. So that's on our next agenda. And that is what I have. Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Councilmember Christensen, Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll probably defer this item to Sean since it's new to me. I read it. You can tell us the details of why we need that gate out there.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Mayor, members of the council. Here we call, May 21st, we discussed the brush site and dumping, unauthorized dumping, making it more secure, changing keys three or four times since it's been opened already. That whole conversation, we had at least one evening, if not multiple evenings. What I'm proposing is a system with a motorized gate and a key fob or ID card reader that will replace the current gate and padlock system. Of course, as you know, the fobs and ID cards are, can't duplicate them, so it'll prevent some of that. There will be some, some learning curve that we've got to go through to get, to get the system up and running. But following the discussion that we had before, we've, we solicited quotes. We've got, we received two. A low quote was from Andy's Fence Hall and the amount of 73, $7,371.69. And coupled that with Bacchus Technology for the key fob system and the amount of $3,546.50. The project was, this was discussed as well, the project was not included in the operating budget for '18, as we didn't anticipate it being the issue that it is at this time last year. Funds are available from a floor drain project that we will do in-house. So there are funds available. And so the proposal would be to re-appropriate the $15,000 from the floor drain repair project to fund this brush site gate system project.
Any questions or comments, concerns? Rick?
I don't have a concern, but I was in Buffalo last Thursday for youth baseball. And lo and behold, right by the baseball fields and ice rink, they have their brush site. There's a sign on there. They don't take anything larger than five-inch diameter.
We've got some a little bit larger than that right now.
I saw they were stacked out there, so, but yeah, that was interesting.
I have just a common concern, and that would be, this is going to be electric, I'm assuming, motor.
Correct.
What happens if we lose electricity or something out there?
As with any electronic type system, there'll be a manual override that we can probably have a master key of some sort that would be at public works that we can get it open if we need to.
And then the fobs or cards, reader cards, who would actually have them? The guys that work out there? I mean?
Correct. The guys that work out there, of course, public works would have them. We'd have some at City Hall or A1 at City Hall that would, that would open that up. And I don't know whether, we haven't, I don't know exactly, I haven't read through the details of the Bacchus Technologies bid, but my understanding is that they could be programmed into our, into the city ID cards already. If, you know, on a, on a case-by-case basis, or have the little round fobs that can be handed to specific individuals, the gentlemen that work out there on the three days a week. And of course, public works superintendent would have one as well.
Okay. I know we had a problem, been an issue with outsiders having keys and going out there on a Sunday and opening it up. So that probably wouldn't happen with the card or?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Okay. As the council, go ahead, Sean.
I'm curious, if we reallocate these dollars, how fast would we be able to get this gate system up and operational?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manzer, but I, these guys are, they're ready to go. And so it would be, it would be yet here in the next couple of months, I'd imagine.
Yeah, I think we just have to, you have to go ahead and order the gates where the...
Yeah, so it'd be the ordering the specific parts, the lag time on that would be it.
Unlike that, if the question was you're going to ask if this could move forward, sooner than later, we're in the throes of the season, so.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Front end, have we had a question?
Yeah. Will these, will this system identify who's using the fob, or is it just open and close and you don't know who's using it? Or is there a checks and balance in that?
Sure. There would be, there would be a history that you could pull. Anything electronic like that would be able to pull the history on, on who was accessing it. There's also a camera system set up, and I don't know whether, I can't remember if that's tied in with wastewater cameras or not, but there's a camera system set up so that it can be, I mean, we could see who's.
Monitor.
At certain times. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is the committee willing to move this forward, the next council, tonight's council meeting? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I believe that's it.
Next is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. We're actually scheduled to be on the second meeting in the month, but just for your information, May reports are, been included. We forgot to get those to you at the last meeting. So we will be back at the next meeting with updated information for June and perhaps a little more detail on a couple other things. So it's just there for your information. Yes, sir?
Councilmember Nelson, at the beginning of the report, it states that in the past, the council has had committees and kind of takes a little bit of a shot at the council for not having a committee structure. Well, we went back to a committee structure a month and a half ago, so I'm not sure the merit of that introduction comment any longer on that report. So maybe you could work with the finance director and find out why he has it on there and get it off of there.
I'm not sure what you mean. Where are you referencing?
I'll read it to you. Prior to 2017, the Finance Committee previously received various reports reviewed. Beginning in 2017, the reports have been provided to the council at the second work session of the month. So I don't know that, that there is any value of having that statement in there. And I think that it would be beneficial to say that this report is being submitted to the council for their information.
All right.
I would say point, point of order, Mr. Mayor. I, if she's the Finance Committee Chair, why can't she put on there what she wants to put on? I don't understand that. I don't find it offensive.
I say that was my opinion.
Both of your opinions have been noted. I will work with Mr. Okens to come up with a new, new document for the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything else for finance?
Yes.
Do we, we don't have a Finance Committee still, do we?
We are.
In verbiology, I thought we had a chair who brings those things forward, but not necessarily, there's no committee necessarily, is there?
Right.
Okay. So it's, it's us. So since the, the chair has duly noted it, that's all that's required. There is not technically a Finance Committee, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. Otherwise, I was wondering where my Labor Committee was. All right. I'm good.
Feeling left out.
Ms. Thompson, I don't believe anybody from the public signed up. Is that correct? Okay. Next is Vision 2040 presentation, Mr. Ken Warner.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ken Warner. I'm the Chair of Vision 2040, and we really appreciate the opportunity to give you an update of where Vision 20 has been, where we're at, and where we're heading. It's hard to believe that it's been five years already that we've been an organization that has, I think, accomplished a lot of things in the community, so I'd like to share that with you. Vision 2040, as you know, has been put together to create a long-term plan for the community on things that we'd like to see and have done in our community. And this is all done through collaboration, partnerships, and most importantly, it's community-led. It's not the Chamber's agenda, it's not the United Way's agenda, it's not the Foundation's agenda, it's the community's agenda and what the community would like to see going forward. One of the things, of course, is the shining star that we all worked on and are very proud of is the Destination Playground. We found out here that the technology is not working here, but we did have a time lapse that shows the playground being put together. But we'll save that for next time. And I know it's on the, on our website. But the other thing I want to make note of is that in the five years that Vision 2040 has been around, we've accomplished 43 different projects, partnerships, and events in our community. So that's pretty substantial. And the other part that I think is important to state is that we've been very proud of the things that have been given birth. And once it gets to the point where it can crawl or walk on its own, we can let it go. We don't need to hang on to it because there's lots of other things that we want to do in the community. So what we did is, back in January, we had a refresh event. We figured it was time to take a timeout. A lot of the things that we had done have been accomplished and it was kind of getting kind of like we're just meeting to meet. So we had another town hall meeting, we had a facilitator come in, we had roughly 150 people show up, and that's what's been wonderful. Every time we have one of those types of meetings, people show up, they want to be heard, they want to share their ideas, they want to share their dreams. And so this is very important to keep people engaged in these processes. So what we came up with were five different events, there are key findings that the community would like to move forward on, their health and wellness, communication, inclusion, and engagement. You might say, well, what does that mean? Well, with health and wellness, some of the things that were thrown out there that people would like to see is an outdoor co-working space with Wi-Fi. I can tell you, last week, I took my grandkids to the splash park and I seen three people working on their laptops as the kids were running around and screaming and yelling and playing in the water. So that was cool. They'd like to see some rentals at Robins Island, and I know that's in the process. And community gardens and neighborhood parks, I thought that would be kind of fun to have other gardens besides the couple that we do have in the community. And so those are just a couple of ideas. Communication, again, we're talking about maybe some new branding for the community. I know for many, many years, we talked about what is the slogan for Wilmer, what's the look for Wilmer, what's, how can we get it all together so we're all using it so people know about Wilmer in a little better sense? And I can use, do London's a city on the pond and Spicer's nicer, and you go, Wilmer is. So we'd really like to work on developing that. And that, another important part was that it would be nice to have a central place to find information about the community. I know that we all have links together through the social media part of it, but people still like to come in and get the paper and they like to get the visitor guides and just that hard paper stuff. So it would be nice to have some type of a central location for that. Inclusion, as we all know, our community has done a really good job with inclusion. We need to continue that. There was a real plea to really try to get more youth involved in our community. They are our future, as we all know that. We've talked about having some different types of networking events for new residents and hosting new community members. How do people get connected if they're new here? As we work hard to bring new people to our community and say there's a trailing spouse or significant other, they need to get plugged into the community too on what's going on. If they want to get together and say, where do I find daycare? What's a service club for me to join? How do I find this? How do I find that? They can do that if we can host those kind of events. And we talked about hosting coffees, we talked about a luncheon, a picnic, any kind of way that we can get people together. We also talked about a Wilmer Welcoming Center. I think that's been talked about a lot in the community over the years. Again, that could serve as that maybe one-stop shopping to pick up information on our community. And then the seniors are looking for more intergenerational conversations to happen out there, not only with youth, but with different ethnic groups in our community. They just want to learn. They just want to sit down and talk to somebody. Tell me about your culture, tell me about the history of Wilmer, those kind of opportunities. Engagement, again, it's trying to keep our community engaged. I think you found out last week when you had your meeting on the locations for potential new City Hall, people like to show up, they like to share their opinion and know that they've been heard. And that's what they want. And so that's the biggest part of the engagement piece. There was a real interest in maybe look at trying to do something with a lunch or breakfast with the mayor and with council members. I think it's a lot more comfortable for the general public to be able to go to a coffee shop and sit down and share with you, just like when they do the police department versus a presentation like this. So that's an opportunity. And a shop local campaign, again, trying to encourage people to shop here so we don't hear stories about, you know, the challenges our malls have and our challenges downtown is having, retail overall with the Amazon factor that's out there. And then what we did, this was really cool, and this was the other technology piece that we're missing here, is we hired two interns this summer to basically go around and do social media about all the different things going on in our community of Candyway County. And so Ingrid Figgenskow is on the left and Chloe Howerson is on the right. They play off of each other so well because Ingrid is a little bit more conservative and Chloe's kind of out there and wants to do things kind of on the wild side, and so they play off of each other very well. And we're very happy to have them. And the other cool part of this is that they both went through the CEO program. And so we were able to snap a couple of those young people up, and they're both in college, but they were just itching to come back and tell their story. And they actually had to do video interviews and talk about why they wanted to do this. And you could tell the passion and the love that they have for our community. And so it was automatic that they should be there. So you'll see them around and out and about. They'll be wearing Vision 2040 identification so people know who they are. So if you have some things coming up and you'd like to have them at your event, just let them know or let us know or Facebook them or Snapchat them or Instagram them, whatever gram them you want to do. So they're out there. And again, I just talked about that with our programs with them. And the other thing that we've been creating, we've created through Vision 2040 is a hashtag. It's called Can Do, it stands for Candy Ojai, so we can can do this and we can do that. So we're encouraging people to hashtag things as they do it. If you're not quite sure how a hashtag works, the young ladies have put together a very fun video that talks about the waffle sign or the palm sign and how you create a hashtag and how a hashtag works. So I'd encourage you to go to our website and check that out. And the last item is, is for people in our community that if they have ideas, we want them to get involved, we want them to come to us, we want them to email, we want them to share on any kind of social media. We have 28 people that serve on our steering committee. The steering committee meets the second Wednesday of the month at 10 o'clock at the Community Foundation. Councilmember Schwannus is your representative, is one of the stakeholders on the team. Mayor Calvin and Administrator Holland are able to come once in a while and sit in on the meetings. But rarely are there empty chairs in the room. Everybody keeps coming to those meetings and participating in those meetings. And those 28 people helped put together those 43 projects that I talked about earlier. So it's a very engaged process. Some of the people, I would tell you that they're probably ready to step aside and let other people step in. So if there are folks out there that are interested in doing this, we're all open. And then the final thing I want to mention is the partnership with the stakeholders with those 28 people. A lot of them are responsible for the funding that's put together. The city of Wilmer has sponsored Vision 2040 since we started, and we want to thank you very much for that. But there are 13 paying partners for that. Our local media are also partners in this, so it's a great partnership. We operate annually on about $40,000 a year that's reinvested back into the community doing Vision 2040 stuff. That's what I have, and I'd be happy to take any questions or... We also have a printed report. If you'd like it, I can drop it off at City Hall, maybe I'll put in the mailboxes, but...
Great. Anybody from the council that has any questions for Mr. Warner? Councilmember Schwantus?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I think it's great, and I am so thrilled that we have the Vision 2040 program in the county. We are very fortunate, and it's amazing that we've done 43 projects. That's hats off to everyone who's been in leadership. If the general public listening is interested in getting one of the refresh reports, where would they go to get that?
They just go to Vision 20, Wilmer Lakes Area, vision2040.com.
Thank you.
Or stop at the office. At the forum.
Maybe we could have a couple extras at City Hall in case people want to stop there. Just Councilmember Elverado?
That hashtag, I think, is pretty simple to use. I used it last night. I saw some bikers around the community center and took a quick picture, hashtagged it, and moved it on. So it's real simple to do that.
And one of the things I wanted to mention too, that makes me so proud of being part of this, is we're getting contacted by other communities and they're saying, how are you guys doing this? You got this beautiful playground, you got this group of people that's working together as a community, and it's so fun to be able to share with them that it's all pro bono stuff. Nobody's getting paid to do this, everybody's just rolling up their sleeves and getting the work done. So we're making a better community because of it.
Councilmember Nelson?
I just wanted to say thank you. I've enjoyed participating in a variety of the committees or the different things that have gone on and looking forward to how it's kind of retooled and some new directions with some of that. But I would also encourage council members, if you haven't been at one of those different committees, to look to see what you're passionate about or what you're interested in, because it's really fun to see the community come together and come with ideas on different things. So just thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to thank you for the work that you do as well. I mean, I was Chair of that for a little while, you remember that? And then you graciously stood up after I stepped out. So Vision 2040's done a lot of great things in our community, not only in Wilmer, but also in all of Candyway County. So, and I'll just second what Councilmember Elverado, I think in the last week, I think I've hashtagged Can Do probably four, five, six different times and different things going on in our community. And, you know, the Community Integration Center on Saturday had their event and hashtagged that and just a lot of other things. And the other thing I think that I really appreciate what you're talking about too is the shop local piece. I mean, our local business people need us to invest in our community. And, you know, I've said that from the mayor's chair and this council has echoed that, is that we want our people to be buying local as much as you can. And, you know, because those dollars that are spent locally are spun time after time after time when you spend those dollars local. So thank you for reminding us of that again today, and thank you for the good work that you do with Vision 2040. So keep up the good work and thank your committees. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Invest in Wilmer. Mr. Matt Dawson.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for having us back again this evening. We appreciate the opportunity and the time to visit tonight. On the first slide tonight, you guys have all been sent this, what we really have reached out, phone calls, emails, have really tried to connect with as many people as we can on many different areas of the projects that we have identified. And I think one of the things that's amazing to us is the amount of positive feedback we've received, but also the focus that we've had is the three areas within the city that is generating an unbelievable amount of volunteers, a lot of great energy, Robins Island Regional Park, Swanson Regional Park, and the Civic Center. There's just hundreds and hundreds of people that have put in so much time and energy, and we're hoping to be, partner up with those groups. And we have some representatives tonight if there's specific questions that anybody would have. On the top slide here, we've identified our five projects that we are now looking at trying to focus in on. The total funding at $28 million and a half cent, and we project about 12 years. Or if funding were to be received prior to that, then obviously the years would go down. I believe when I did the research, the county projected 2.7 is what they're using. We're using 2.5. And with the new laws with online state sales tax, we have projected it'll probably be less than the 12 years. The Recreation Center at 10, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. And then the auditorium is not the existing auditorium, it is actually the auditor, we're calling the, we want everything to be multipurpose as much as possible, so we'll visit on that. The Recreation Fields at 6, Robins Island Regional Park at 3, Swanson Field Regional Park at 2, and then the Stormwater at 7. So any dollars above that? I've actually called the state of Minnesota, and I've talked to Dave Baker a little bit about our projects regarding just some basic questions on as we hopefully continue to move forward. Obviously, we would need the question to go onto the ballot eventually here, and then we would look to go from there for our next step. The next slide. The Recreation Center slash Auditorium. One of the things that we would want to do once we have the Recreation Director hired is obviously work with them and provide feedback for programming. You know, one of the things 15, 18 years ago, when we had started the CER, that's changed is the programs have grown dramatically. And I do think that obviously there's a lot more volume and a lot more opportunities. I think there was a study and a consultant that came in, I believe I was on, in one of those meetings where they were overwhelmed at how much stuff we have to offer, which is exciting. So basically what we've got here is, you know, if we take a look at programming for seniors, nothing in this project is specific to anybody's age. Nobody, nobody, we want to make sure that everybody understands, you know, if September through May, you would be looking at 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., would be all senior recreation programs that would coordinate with the Community Center, the YMCA, Robins Island and whatnot. That's one thing that we're hoping the new director will be able to do is really coordinate and make sure that they're working together to complement all the programming in the community and not duplicating anything. So from pickleball to hitting golf balls to any yard games that anybody's going to play Wednesday, that could all go into this facility, the rec center slash with the turf with the dome as well. 1,500 seats in this facility is what we would want the committee to take a look at. We've received that feedback from some individuals in our community that have mentioned for larger shows, concerts, programs, graduations. And certainly something that we'd want to take a look at and have the committee work on and make sure that we're looking at that as well. And if you have a facility that has a couple indoor tennis courts with indoor pickleball courts, we feel that obviously we'd want to obviously look at all our options to make sure that we can have shows and not worry about tearing out ice and putting up folding chairs and see what we can do to attract some programming as well for that. The outdoor covered rink out the back is an opportunity for, we want to continue to offer kids an opportunity to skate outside. We certainly work very hard in town and we do a lot of work with trying to get kids to just try skating as a recreational activity. And many of them will never join a hockey team ever. But today, right now, today, if you're in fourth or fifth grade, if you're not on an association boosters traveling hockey team, you're done playing hockey in the city of Wilmer. As much as we work hard over at Garfield and the outdoor ice is very difficult with the weathers, winter weathers that we're having. So the idea with the rink for three months out the back, we already have staff out there, we already have skates out there, we have people out there, we have little kids running around all over the place. It would be an opportunity to give some kids and hopefully some other kids that maybe aren't as fortunate or maybe just needs a little bit more help to try skating. And having a cover over it, just taking the sun off of the ice right there and the snow will be dramatically a benefit for extending and providing some opportunities with the Zamboni out there. We have had Public Works, Gary will come out and drop water off if we need to, but it's been very difficult to keep that going. The rinks in town, the lights, the warming houses, the boards are all not in in good shape whatsoever. So that would be one option, obviously, that we'd like to have. The other nine months, what our goal would be is maybe to have lines down where we could have indoor pickleball or pickleball in there. You could have street hockey, you could have floor hockey, you could have, there's soccer, you could play inside this facility. It would get used in Grand Rapids. I know they've used them for wedding receptions and some different things. They've worked with the local... They've worked with the local companies that, that handle weddings and things like that. Any questions on that slide? The next slide I'll move over to is the recreational fields. In April twenty-seventh, John and myself, we met with the building and grounds committee and the superintendent of the schools, and we visited with them about our vision of this, of the school board. And just kind of started to mention, they offered us an opportunity to come to the school board and present, and we said, well, we, we've got eight people here that we want to see if they're interested in partnering, partnering up with us. We had a conversation there, they were, they were very positive, and like I said, they, they offered us to come to the school board meeting. This morning, we met with that same group again, like there's three stu, uh, three members on there, the, and then Dr. Home as well, and we visited with them again and talking about, is there a way? And what we're seeing more and more from the research we've done is schools and cities working together and making sure we're pulling our resources and being smart and not building this and that. And the schools, right now, today, as you guys all know, the, the city uses the school gyms for programming. The school uses the city fields and ice arenas for different things. That, that's going to have to continue. We're not big enough to separate. So that's part of the idea, and they also, again, invited us if we wanted to come back to their meeting and talk about that piece of land to the north. So everything that we have that we're presenting is specific to city recreation. Yes, it would benefit every school in the city of Wilmer as well, in our opinion. So soccer fields, so two turf fields to the north of the civic center. The idea behind this is, is a couple of reasons. Number one, our soccer programs are growing dramatically, and they're playing actually soccer on some fields that, that honestly are not that safe, in my opinion. So two fields, it rains one night, the next day you can play on it. You play on another field over here and it, and it rains and you tear it up and, and you tear the field up. The other benefit of a couple turf fields is the lack, less maintenance and less, less wear and tear on it. But the other thing that's going to happen is if we did have a turf field or two for soccer or baseball, football, whatever, other, other programs, is there should never, ever be again another soccer game on a tennis court. And I witnessed that pretty much on a weekly basis. So what happens, I believe, is it's, with the water that we've had and the raining that we've had, obviously, it's just a natural thing that you'll see, you'll see a lot of activity on the tennis courts that's not tennis. Our numbers and our, our vision and our, our, our ideas are, are, started three, four years ago with Tony and myself with community and rec advisory board, and it started to pick up again, obviously, a few months ago. Robbins Island, the budget there is three million, and you're going to hear from Robbins Island tonight, it's been an unbelievable project. I drove in the other night during the fireworks and I drove past on seventy-one and our family almost, it was unbelievable, the amount of people that were out. Obviously, an incredible property that is being used nonstop. These people have worked hard on Robbins Island and it's just unbelievable. So obviously, we, we went to them and said, you know, we're not going to micromanage or ask you what to do or not to do, what, what are, what's the need? And this is what we have on, on the document there, and that's slide number three. Slide number four, it's Swanson Field Regional Park. If you've been out there, it's also hard to find a parking spot because it's another unbelievable property that, in the city of Wilmer, that's being used nonstop. These are the details that we received from the committee and from their, their plan as well, the user groups, and then that's off of the master plan of the park plan. If you wanted to go back and tie into these things, it's, it's, it's in some of those documents that, that you have received as well. Number five, stormwater. It's pretty hard to, I think I mentioned at one point, I woke up in two thousand sixteen with about six inches of water in my basement, live in southwest Wilmer. So for myself and many others, we're serious about this, and I, I think that I've been to the council meeting not as much as I should, but every time, almost every time I've been here, it's been on the, on the agenda. I'm not an expert in this. Obviously, I believe that this is, is, is a project. We, we certainly want to reach out and understand this is a need. It, it is, it's not because half our town was built on a slough, there's, there's other challenges. And, and I think that that's critical, obviously, that we, we help put some funding in here for this. And these are, this is the project number five, that we believe that obviously is, is a need, that would also help, help people. We've got some homes in, in southwest Wilmer, I'm, I'm not sure if you could sell them right now, to be honest with you, with some of the things that have happened. So hopefully, that would be something where there's a master plan, a consultant. The other thing is, we, we would really like to get, receive funding before we spend more money on, on consultants and engineers. We know that we want to do this right and be very careful. That's where we offer the committee. So we're actually realizing that we would want to partner up with staff and with city and, and work together and really come together, obviously, and this is where the decisions would be made. This is basic, or the decisions would be made here and then they would be presented to the city council. This would be critical. We would want people on here that, that have expertise and that can, that can really, really make decisions based on what's in the best interest of the overall community, not their own personal agenda. So, but we will need experts in some of these areas. So obviously, this is, this is one of the things that five people here tonight, or six, myself, John, and Tony, and then, and then Rachel and Dave are here tonight as well. And, and we obviously have a plan moving forward if the council believes what we believe, and that is the risk of doing, there is some risk in doing this, but we, we believe the risk in not doing this is much greater moving forward. So, questions?
Matt, thank you for your presentation. I know that you guys have been working endlessly on this. I get emails from you day and night and a few phone calls since the last time that you were here. So thank you and your committee for your diligent work. So, Council, this is our opportunity to give some feedback, give some direction on what we would like to see. They have, they are proposing five different projects, as we had explained to us this evening. I know that you have members of each of those groups that, so if there's a specific question that someone would have, you'll have somebody here that can address that. And then also then, the Invest in Wilmer Committee idea or thought and, and some feedback on that. Again, the timeline, Mr. Holland, is, is that we have to have it approved by the meeting, first meeting in August, correct?
We do on our regular schedule, and I was handed a note the, this afternoon that, from our city clerk, that we have to have it to the county auditor no later than August twenty-fourth. So if we had to call a special meeting, we could, but ideally, we need to keep it within our regular schedule.
So that's kind of where we're at. So they're looking for feedback from the council, what you're hearing. I'm hearing a lot of things in the community. So, Council, any questions that you have at this point? And it's an aggressive plan, but the thing that I really appreciate, Matt, is how your committee has really listened to the community. You know, when I was at the Chamber of Public Policy and some new ideas came out there and I called you and you were on top of it right away. I mean, you had answers like boom, boom, boom. So thank you and your committee for being responsive when those questions have come to you. And, and, you know, your original plan was for a fifty million dollar project, and you know, what you're looking at now is twenty-eight, if I remember right, twenty-eight million. And so, I mean, you heard from the public that they want it not to be quite as long, so you've reduced that. Of course, if council wanted to extend that out, they certainly could. I don't think you'd be opposed to that. But we want something that the public is going to pass, is what your desire is. So, Council questions? Councilmember Elvado.
I think we're, we have to remember, I'm hoping that you can look at, think of, retool something for the, our senior community. I, I hear that they, they love the location currently where it's at. They, 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 I've been told that to go out towards the ice arena in that area, it's confusing for them. I'm, I'm, you know, and I understand that there's going to be exercise facilities and, and they're going to be available, I understand that. But I think, I think the mayor talked about, or somebody talked about the, the fact that the seniors want to visit, they want to sit down and maybe communicate with the intergenerational kind of piece and not maybe exercise. So I don't know how we can dovetail that, bring that into fruition for them, or make that a piece. And I, I know, I'm all for this. I've, I've, I've expressed that to you guys before. I think it's, as a, as a regional community, city, we need this. But I, I, I hope we can look something, look for something, massage this or whatever to keep something for the community center. And I, I don't, you know, and I hope I'm not throwing a monkey wrench in anything. I, I, like I said, I'm all for this. Thank you. I appreciate your work. This is amazing.
Councilmember Elvado, just a follow-up question from my side, so I can more clearly understand what you're saying. So you're asking them to add a fifth project to, a sixth project then? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I don't know if it's a sixth project or if they can massage this and factor it into something else. I don't know. You know, it, does it have to be a sixth project? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there that I know the seniors would like the senior center where it's at. I know there's a, I know there's issues with that building. I understand all that. And I, if we can, we can, if we can't, we can't, and we move forward. But I know that's a concern.
Couple of follow-up thoughts. I thank you for your, your comments, I appreciate it. One thing that we would like to do is, if this moves forward, is, is have somebody represented from that on the committee if, if things move forward. There's a lot of seniors out there that, you know, want to, want to hit some golf balls, want to go for a walk, want to play pickleball, want to do some, something else, and we certainly would want to coordinate with the community center. About three years ago, we spent quite a bit of time trying to see if we could work something together. And I think we're talking about, about two different things here, but whether there's shuttle buses between the two from, I mean, I, I could see a shuttle bus going from the, the community center to the rec center to Robbins Island and, and have a, have it really work together. Also, the senior programming piece between seven thirty and two thirty. To me, that is going to be a, a really neat opportunity. I think there's actually a lot of seniors that don't live in Wilmer anymore because there's, there's not those opportunities, and they are in the cities. My in-laws are in their late seventies and they play pickleball in the cities every week, and they don't have an athletic bone in their bodies. And they do because it's fun and it's activity, and then they, they're at a facility that they enjoy, and they, they, they're not just with, they're with a variety of people and from skating to events and whatnot. So I, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, I just believe that, obviously, this will benefit a lot of seniors. Thank you.
And I believe so. I believe you're correct.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Matt, and your committee. I know you've worked long and hard on this, and I think it's an excellent project, and I have no problem putting it on the ballot and letting the citizens decide. Just a question on the hockey at Lincoln and Garfield. Do you eliminate the boards there then and just put it all, out at the ice arena then?
So as far as just outdoor skating, right now, today, we have outdoor skating at Hilltop Park, Garfield, and there's a little sheet of ice over at Lincoln. But what's happened over at Lincoln is the warming house and the bathrooms, we've had them freezing up because the heater sometimes doesn't go off, or continue, so we've had some issues with that warming house. So they shut down the warming house. The lights at Lincoln are the worst of those three outdoor rinks. They're very bad, and it's not a couple light bulbs. They haven't been able to fix them, and there hasn't been any commitment to put money into Lincoln, and, and we understand that. So basically, we asked Gary, Gary, can you, can you just take Lincoln boards and put them at Garfield? So we had two sets of hockey boards at Garfield. There's a small sheet at Hilltop. Hilltop and Garfield lights are okay, but the board, I mean, the boards are rotting out, the, the warming houses are, are, are rough. But they're, they're fine. Again, we're, we're, we would probably still continue those and still have an outdoor rink at the Civic Center would be our, our hope. So I think we still would want an outdoor sheet in town, maybe for sure Garfield.
It is expensive to have hockey boards in town because you have to have staff put them out and then take them back in. I proposed ten years ago to have a sheet outside by the ice Civic Center, and I don't know if it ever really happened. I don't think.
We've tried out there, putting a couple sheets out there and just, it gets, I think we're, we're going to have to put some kind of a, a structure where there's, it just gives you, we don't have the refrigeration in there as much as I would have loved, that would have given you five months, but the reality is, we, we probably don't need it. It would have been, it would give you that November and March, but it's probably enough. We'd get, what we're going to do is, we're going to get three more months. We're going to get December, January, February with the cover over it. It, it is busy out there, and there is zero recreation open hockey at the Civic Center on the weekends. There, there's barely, there's open skating on Sunday nights at, at the Civic Center. It's from six thirty to nine, and I met with Rob today, it's, he makes, they make five hundred dollars on average every time they have that. But the ice is so rented between all the user groups, but this just gives you another option, and that could be rented out. It would, it would definitely get used, so.
Okay. No, I was just looking at saving some money by eliminating some hockey rinks.
I think that's, yeah, I think at some point that we're, we've kind of, I think, I think Lincoln is pretty much, and the north side's pretty much, north side's been done, Lincoln's going that direction. Garfield and Hilltop right now is what we have, and, and I, you know, I better, better leave it at that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Invest in Wilmer, for putting this project together. I know I shared my comments with you earlier, I'll do so again publicly here. Put a little bones on what Councilmember Elvado was talking, put a little muscle on his bones there. We did a facility and assessment management program study in two thousand sixteen, and the community center is on borrowed time, to say the least. That is our building that isn't the biggest disrepair. I would not call it a senior center, that was what it was, but it is a community center, and it shares a very different function. What I've appreciated about this project is it definitely delineates the difference between a recreation center and a community center. And I don't think one has to be mutually exclu, inclusive of the other, exclusive. They are both, they're both, I think, very valuable, and I think there's room for both of them. In that study that cites all of the issues that are wrong with that building, to replace that building, the study says it's about one point three million dollars. Now, that was in two thousand sixteen, and we haven't done the upgrades on that, so I suppose it probably has depreciated a little bit more. But as I look at the projects here, those five projects are twenty-eight million. I can't see that community center, if we were to build the new community center right where it is at, put in the infrastructure you're talking about of shuttling back and forth, a two million dollar addition and inclusion of a community center, a community center, which is different than a recreation center, I see that as a win-win. And so, where you said, I'm not proposing a sixth, I would propose a sixth. And I would put a price tag of a two million dollars to make that a thirty million dollar project, so we can include all aspects of this community, including folks that perhaps don't want to do some of those activities at the rec center, but they want to do the ones at the community center, but they would perhaps engage in them if they had that opportunity. So I see it as an opportunity because I'm afraid, as we move forward with city office and that coming out of perhaps bonding or things, at some point, the community center will be left out because we'll have a local option sales tax perhaps, perhaps this is bonded, and then we may not have any room for a community center because the community may feel as if they've tapped out. And so that would be a suggestion that I would have, is, is a two million dollar community centerpiece to throw into the mix.
Thank you. Councilmember Mesky, just, and Councilmember Elvado, I just did a little bit of quick math, and we are projecting, or this, the finance director has projected the numbers higher than what you're using for your figures. And so if you took the two point eight million and used that as the figure, that would bring in another three point six million dollars, which would easily cover it. So then you just make the project go the full twelve years and then add that as an additional piece. At one point, the finance director felt that if, if we started collecting the tax on the online sales, we could even be pushing that three million number. So the reason I was pushing a little bit on Councilmember Elvado was, is that there might be capacity there without extending the years.
I, I don't, I, the financing is the, the, how many years is fine. I just want to make sure that we are cognizant that we have one of our bigger buildings that serves more than just Wilmer. That is a, truly a community center and seems like it fits the local option sales tax kind of a concept to a T, so I don't want to see that lost in the shuffle because, like I said, I think if we pass this, which I hope we do. this, which I hope we do, and I think all of the, that's why I don't have questions about your projects. I think you were spot on. I just don't want to see that community center piece lost in the shuffle, in particular as we talk about city offices as well, because it seems like we are putting out a lot of things, then we might hit a capacity limit. But I think this, I mean, especially if you can fit it in within that 12 years, I think that, that would be fine. But I think it needs to be identified as a project and not just a residual after we're done, oh, there's some money for this. People need to know upfront, it's going to be for this.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I've stated before, I'm supportive of a local option sales tax for our community for the right projects, and I think you've done a good job with that. I was going to speak to the community center in that I think we have a responsibility to make sure that the community understands what you were proposing is not the community center, that it was a rec center with an auditorium. I'm interested in the conversation that's taken place here at the table to look at what could we do with our current community center. I think the location next to Robins Island also speaks to the developments that we're doing at Robins Island and how it could be used in a lot of different ways. So I'm excited to, to hear that. I would hope that you might look at expanding your committee a little bit, too. I know that there was a good committee structure the last time, I think it was, and perhaps just to look at that, to see who needs to be at the table to provide that support and to further. The figures are good the way they are. With that, what happens after that, I think to actually develop those projects, I think would be very helpful for you to expand in, in some of the business community, too, that needs to be supporting this, so.
I think that's some great points. That's definitely one thing that we're hoping for if this project moves forward, and we understand, I mean, we have to pass this, and we plan a very aggressive plan. We also plan at that point, we could go to the booster clubs and the businesses and also apply for grants and really take this to another level. So it's certainly not 100% subsidized by the city. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're moving, moving this.
I just wanted to say thank you. Also, I think you've done a good job both communicating with us and with the community and looking for information and, and opinions on that. So I just want to say thank you to you and your committee for your hard work.
Welcome. Thank you.
Well, I'm hearing that we have support, or should I say that you have support? And so I think what I would like to do, if the council's okay, is to direct the administrator to work with the Invest in Wilmer project to bring back to us a question, including, would you guys be amicable to a sixth item on there or not?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, if it's in the best interest of the community, if that's what the group wants and the need is there, we have never said no or excluded anybody. So it's just been one of those things where the message that we've received is they like where they're at, that they like, and so we didn't want to, obviously, just throw them into the, the picture. But if, if it's clearly something that would benefit, then we certainly could put something together and come back and just kind of, and if you've got a certain dollar amount, you know, there won't be time for all the details, but if we know that there's a number involved that would, would, from the building report, maybe that's as easy as we can.
Well, the building report number, actually, I think it was the second worst. I think the city hall was the worst.
City hall was second, but I just looked at it last night. It depends on what number. They had the, they called it a facility condition index and a replacement index. The replacement index is much higher for the city offices, but the condition index is much worse for the community center. So it depends on which one you're looking at.
So then maybe, maybe what you should consider then would be adding an additional year. And I don't know if you guys are having a sidebar conversation there, if that's kind of what you were thinking or what, but, you know, do you remember what the number was to replace the building?
Yeah, the replace, yep, the replacement value. Now, this was again, 2016, but it was 1.3 million, and I don't know if you would want to replace it with exactly what is there. I mean, obviously, it's going to perhaps have a different design to it, and that's where we can get some more feedback of what is it going to be utilized for, because there could be totally different functions that are there if we're going to rebuild that building. But the replacement value of the existing building was 1.3 million in 2016.
Councilmember Christiansen, do you think that's a good number or not?
I'm sure 2 million's going, it's going to be a minimum.
Right. That's what I was thinking, two, two and a half. So if we added an additional year, went to 13 years, added additional 1.5 million for that, councilmember Elvorado, does that meet your needs?
I, yes, it does. I, I think we have a, that section of the, of our community needs to be addressed and feel like they're part of this project.
Who's a representative to the community center?
Councilmember Osmus would be a representative.
And is that something that you're comfortable with, that you feel that you would be okay with, with the group and, and whatnot?
Definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
And I, I like the idea of possibly taking it off the plate of the bonding and separating it from the city hall, because it really is more of a local option sales tax, regional significance building.
Yeah. I mean, we obviously are supportive of that as long as the need, and, and we would just ask that you, you know, work with the group on the details of what they want, because we wouldn't have time to figure all that out, so.
Right.
So that's the thing I'm a little worried about, is that we're, we're adding another project to the mix, and, you know, I mean, we're, we're not at the 12th hour, but we're at least at the 11th. And so, but I think if we use your numbers, you know.
They're not mine. They're at our facility.
But I mean, the numbers that you brought forward. Right, right.
Is that a building that's going to be remodeled or replaced?
Well, what we're talking about would be a replacement.
Okay.
Would be a replacement building. How's it going to fit? I mean, do you guys think you're going to be able to?
Why can't you talk to this Darlene Schrader, whoever the program community center manager is and how they use that space and how you want to change it?
And that's, that's a position that's just in the process of getting hired.
Right.
Is a new person for that facility. Right now, Darlene is a, is a volunteer from the community that, that has brought in programming and other parts of the community into the, the community center. But then you've got the senior council, senior, that they have the other, the majority of the time with what they do out there. But there is, I'm just to piggyback on, I mean, just the difference between a rec center, and that's just a lot of activities and sports things and active things, where the community center, when, when we talk about that, there's, they are two totally different facilities. You have a sewing group, you've got singing groups, you've got musical groups, you've got the card playing, you've got the dances. I mean, so there's a totally separate need for the community center. So I like the separation of the two.
Okay.
But I would definitely be happy to serve on the committee, and also when we get that person hired, they would definitely, I would think, would be a part of this process, because they're the ones who are going to really start to gather what that could look like, that, that building.
Councilmember, or city administrator Holland, how does that fit into, I mean, you kind of understand what we're talking about here, and, I mean, you think we can get that moved forward? Think we can get some numbers and that type of thing? Think there'll be a problem or not?
No, it shouldn't be a problem. We can get some numbers, and I was just going to say someone can contact me tomorrow or before you leave tonight, and we'll set up a meeting. And I was talking with our city attorney, and I'll look at that last ballot question from a couple of years ago and kind of do a rough draft of what that question should look like. My question to the council and to the mayor is, would you like me to try to bring that back by the 16th or by the first meeting in August?
I think, I don't think you'll have it in time for the 16th. I think the first meeting in Aug, well, when you have it done, the sooner, the sooner, the sooner the better, but I'm not sure how you're going to, I mean, because you've got some key staff members that have to work on this that are out.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
I've written ballot questions before, is what I'm saying. So some of the background information will have to be compiled, obviously, for the community as they, you, you know, go out and advertise this and try to get support behind it, and you have to have that information and the specifics. But what I'm talking about is just the ballot question itself. And then also, I haven't written one here in Minnesota, but there also in other states, you can provide background information as part of the ballot, too. So I'll have to get with the city attorney and see what it is here in Minnesota, but we'll get that together.
Yeah, in Minnesota, you have to remain neutral. So I think it's basically, isn't it? The city has to remain neutral.
It's still neutral. It's just factual type of information that you can put in there, that there's X amount of buildings, it's going to cost this much, it's over this time period. It's not, you can't use adjectives or anything like that.
Okay. And then I guess our, our public works director, do you think that 2.5 is a, would be a close number from what you've seen out there, or? I guess, at this point, that's an opinion. I'm sorry, I shouldn't put you in that position. I'm sorry. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. Well, let's, I'm going to speak optimistically. That this passes, gets on the ballot, it passes. Timeframe-wise, my concern would be, is some of what we've been talking about, but as a work session question, the issue we're dealing with right now with the community center is the rough.
Right.
How long are we going to continue to put that off? And can we put that off? What would be the timeframe?
Yeah, I think a lot of that, well, those timeframes will be put together by staff and brought back to us.
Okay.
But, you know, I know that some of the critical needs are out at the, are at the rec center, and so, you know, we'll have to coordinate that, we'll have to put that plan together. This is the groundwork we're laying when we're talking about all this stuff with the recreation department, is that we're going to have the tools in place to where we can hit the ground and we can make this stuff happen. And so by doing some of this, we're planning for our future. And so I think that they will be able to work closely.
Councilmember Osmus, maybe, maybe a couple of thoughts would be if you get a chance to meet with the director or the volunteers over there, nail down a location that the city and the people over there would like, which maybe it's right there, and then.
Yeah, I just met, I just met with them last Wednesday and addressed about.
Okay.
70 of them.
A dollar amount, and then a couple of key pieces, a couple anchors to the, what they would want, and then I think we can move forward, and then everything at, through that point, after it passes, has to go through the committee and then presented to the, and that, maybe that's a, maybe that doesn't, the shovel doesn't hit the ground right away on that project. I mean, I don't.
We don't know. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I just, that's, that's a sidebar from your presentation that I just wanted to keep at the forefront of the council, that we have to address that rough.
Right.
And that would be, that would be, that would have to be the end of any, any other projects at this point. If anybody, at this point, I think we would want to lock in here and see if we can get the marketing plan put together, and we have a website, we've got a team of people, and we do have, it's more than us five on the, on the committee, that we have a lot of people that are already doing some research for us and stuffs.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson, you had addressed that you were concerned about the size of the committee, and I know you want to talk a little about sales tax comparisons, so why don't you, can you provide them some direction as what you think the size of that committee should look like and what it should be different than what they're proposing?
I simply just, just look at expanding it a little bit. If we're talking about the senior center, or if we're talking, I didn't see any business community on there. I'm not sure what the makeup of the committee was last time. Perhaps that's something you could check back with that committee and see. I don't have a specific number in mind. I just hope, want it to be inclusive, because I want you to be successful in, in making this pass. And I think some of the conversation we're having about the community center will also be very positive with, with the community to address that, that need. So I don't have a specific in mind, but when I looked at it, I, when you look at the number of things that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Maybe you're going to have subcommittees that are going to be, but the generic part of getting it passed, and then what happens after that, I think, is the question for me, so.
Yeah, we're going to want as many people involved, and we'd like to get going on that here in July here, or August at the latest, so.
I just was going to ask you, you have a slide in here, and I think it would be good for the public to know the sales tax rates for the list of communities there, if you wouldn't mind putting it up and just addressing that a little bit. So I think it's important for us to realize how many communities are utilizing the local option sales tax.
Yeah, this is obviously some information that we took a look at, just because, and part of the reason, we, you know, be honest with you, we actually had feedback from people saying, just put 1% on, let's, let's do more. And, and we're like, well, we got to be very, very respectful to the local businesses here. And so it was very, very carefully thought through, and we did talk to local retailers and wholesalers and just kind of share with them our feelings on this. Obviously, nobody likes the word tax. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but we have to pay bills, we want amenities, we want to recruit people. Hopefully, we can get some development. We're very hopeful that this will continue to hopefully expand our residential and commercial development as well and continue to bring people into our community, which helps build the tax base as well. But this, this is basically the rates from communities not too far, somewhat comparable. You know, and I've shared my feelings on this as well, obviously, it's certainly, the next three or four years, the county for project, projects should come off when they're complete, especially if, if the new online sales tax rates that are, are mandatory on the states that, where you order from, will generate some more revenue as well. So those were the communities that we took a look at that showed us some comparisons.
Okay. So can you go back to the last slide about your committee structure? Because my understanding in, I think it was a sidebar conversation that you and I had had, is that this will be just, and there will be an overall committee, and that's what this would be, but each of your projects would have a committee that would work underneath them as well. So you might have 10, 12, 15, 20 people working on each of the projects, correct?
Yeah, I don't think we turn anyone away, anybody that wants to be involved. Obviously, you have to get, take as much feedback as you can get, and then you, this is the, the five that are going to have to make the decision to recommend to the council. So we certainly would welcome as many people, and I think you're going to have to have subcommittees. Obviously, storm is a lot different from a community center, so we're going to need some people on there that are willing to help and volunteer with some ideas, so.
So you wouldn't be opposed to if one of the community members, you just said, a business owner, and change that number from three to four?
No, I think this is just a model, a platform. If we want to adjust and add and have it be more, I think that'd be fantastic. There's certainly people that have a lot of knowledge and resources we'd want to add to as well, so.
Is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my, wrap my arms around it, because I know when, when you and I had talked, is that you don't want that group too big, or you just end up sitting and spinning your wheels.
And I think.
And, and so this is the group, and if I'm not, if I'm not speaking this correctly, tell me, but in our conversation before, what you said is that this group would take the input from the now six subgroups, they would vet that, make sure everything was in order, so that when it went to the city, the city knew what the priority was and why the priority was, and that everything was in order, so that you didn't have somebody coming and saying, we want to put widgets on gadgets, and somebody else says, well, that's not the way to do it. This is the committee that would come to the council and say, we're ready to move, and this is how we want to move.
Yeah, this, that would be the recommendation from the process, and our hope is we're going to be recruiting people to come onto that over the next four months.
Right.
So, and especially people that just, you know, really want to commit, and it, it's a three or four-year commitment for people. We, we certainly understand this isn't, this is something that we're going to, there's going to be a lot of work involved. So a meeting with as many local people that can do the work would be our hope. I don't know the rules on that, but we want to work with as many local people as possible.
Certainly. Councilmember Osmus.
Something that we haven't discussed is the partnership with the school. And I know that, you know, you can, you have to have the buy-in from one first before you go to the other, but we're talking about school land, and there isn't any formal agreement of how that would happen. And the usage of, does it then end up all being city property? Is the school then going to be paying rent or those agreements? Because they're the ones who are going to be using like the softball fields, the baseball fields, the, the football turf.
Yeah, so right now, today, the city uses the school gyms for programming and different things, and the school uses city properties, a civic center, and the ball fields for programming as well for school sports. So whatever arrangement, agreement, we'd want to continue with that one and that's what we, we would want to do as well. The idea of the property to the north, which is just absolutely ideal to develop this property, if something happened and that didn't work out, then we would pull, pull the turf and the fields down to the city property was what we'd have to do.
It's actually taxpayer property. It isn't the school or the cities. The taxpayers are paying for both of it and if anything happened, we would give the school a buck for whatever territory we needed. We sold them this whole property, many acres, for $1, enough to put another school out here. I think the only renting taking place is the civic center, ice time, isn't it? They don't rent ball fields.
Yeah, I don't think the school charges a city, I don't believe that the city charges a school for anything. I think they just share and, and again, even though CER is not, you're still going to do the same thing. I mean, that's, there's a lot of things that are going to stay the same, it's just going to be communicated between two people versus one person.
Sure. Okay, thank you for your work and so get together with staff, probably, we'll be taking a break here in about four minutes, so get together with staff and the city attorney on the next steps and I think like a couple of members, councilmembers have said, the sooner you can get back to us, the better, so, because then we can digest it more. And I guess Councilmember Nelson, I guess if you have more questions about this committee makeup, I mean, I don't, I don't want this to be the thing, I mean, we spent way too much time, I think, talking about this. This is what happened when we started talking about the position with the committee head and rec and that thing blew up. And I don't want this to blow up over a committee, so.
I simply made a suggestion and I, I do think the business community, you, you only have, if you look, the staff are non-voting members, so if you're going to be bringing something back, I don't see this as an issue, it was simply a suggestion and, you know, I, I did hear the previous committee worked well, so I'm not quite sure that the intent was just a question, so.
Okay. Next, we have our Judy, Ms. Thompson on the adopt records retention items.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in an effort to comply with the records management statute, it's necessary to adopt a plan for managing governmental records, including the proper retention and disposable, disposal of municipal records. The city's used the Minnesota General Records Retention Schedule for cities, but no formal action has been taken to adopt the schedule. Currently, all records are retained in paper format and staff has started scanning documents into a laser fiche. It's staff's desire that council adopts that records retention schedule and electronic files as a permanent retention method and also approve the proposed records management policy to allow easier access to records and eliminate the need for large storage spaces. City Attorney Robert Scott has reviewed the proposed documents and it is the trend of many cities to move toward the electronic storage.
Is that something we need to move forward? I don't know a reason why we would not.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, it has to happen.
Okay, do we want to move it forward tonight? Is that what we're saying or do we want to, is this time sensitive or not?
No, it's not time sensitive. We can put it on the agenda for the 16th under the consent agenda, if that's okay with everyone.
Put it under consent. Does anybody have any problem with going on consent? Okay, we are adjourned.
I don't want to.
Well, I got two waters, I don't know which one I'm going to drink first.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're, I mean.